Called meeting to order. Rule call?
Stephanie Gillespie.
Lynn Heath.
Brian Lindaback.
Lee Butler.
Aaron Masterson.
All right. Looks like we have some minutes to review for the June 16th Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals.
I make a motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one issue, abstention?
Yep. Miss Gillespie, it looks like we have two items on the agenda this evening. First is a application to amend a planned unit development, and is that Teradyne preliminary general planned unit development plan. Les, would you mind giving us some background?
Sure. As I explained to you in the memo, this is a case to amend some text in the PUD that put a limitation on the number of dwelling units that were allowed overall in the PUD. And the proposed configuration is to create a new parcel from a portion of parcel one, which was the original residential and golf course parcel for Teradyne.
And this item was heard by the subdivision committee last Tuesday as well, I believe.
The subdivision committee looked at it strictly as a preliminary plating type of device to talk about lot configuration, utility provisions, right of ways utilities, and so forth.
Does anybody, before we open the public hearing, does anybody have any questions here?
Could I just, do we know if the applicant's here?
Can we pull this up on the overhead screen?
Sure, we can put it up on the screen there.
I'd like to get a visual of everything we're talking about.
Brian has a checklist there to talk about complex of interest and if anybody wants to disqualify themselves.
this case?
Is he applicant?
Yes. Yeah. Please come to the podium.
I'm Bill Fox with Poe and Associates, and I'm the surveyor who prepared the plat, so I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
So this seems to be pretty straightforward, we're just adding two dwelling units to the overall PUD. Does anybody have any questions?
Can you show them where you're adding them up there?
They're on Lot 1 and 2 on the left side there as you.
Okay, I see it.
Go in, they're big lots, almost an acre, what is it, .9 and .8 I believe, or something like that.
.9 and .7?
Yes.
Okay.
And both entrances will be on, I think some of it's under here, both entrance will be off of the side street, not off of Central.
And what's there now?
Nothing.
Grass, prairie, or whatever?
I don't even think there's any trees there either.
There are a few scattered trees towards the north end, and they will remain.
I have a question. Where are the utilities?
Hold on a second.
Just a moment.
He's got to be able to present his application, then you can ask questions during the public hearing.
Thank you.
You have anything, Ned?
I do not.
Anybody else have any questions?
Any more questions for the applicant?
Lee?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, thanks. At this time, we'll open up to the public to, yes sir, please approach. Please give your name and address, and I'll.
And I have some slides that Dana has set up for me.
Okay.
She's going to go backwards, I think, through what's there, someone is there. My name is Leroux Gillespie, and my wife Karen Tevis and I bought the house at 1123 Teradyne Court last year, so I'm a new Andover resident and a new Teradyne resident, not really familiar with all the history that's gone on in the past, so I'm a new kid. I just don't look like a new kid. But Karen and I live in the house with the best backyard in all of Teradyne, and we've shown it up there. This is a view off our deck.
Okay.
And while you in the front can't see it, right along here is where the housings we're talking about will be built, so I'm going to see houses there where now I see grass and trees. I'm interested in maintaining that view. In fact, that wonderful view that we have, that's why I desire to move into this particular house that we're in, because it's beautiful. It's long-seeing, there's nothing in the way, a few people with white golf balls now and then, but other than that, it's beautiful there. We have an unexrupted view all the way down to the trees there along Central. It's natural grass, it's beautiful, and I'm not interested at all in seeing any construction there. Can we go to the next slide? Oh, on that one, thank you. Whoops. See, this is part of the view I have. I have no reason to want to change to something that's going to have a building on that. And the Glenview entrance, Glen Devon entrance, sorry, there is beautiful too. This is Glen Devon, it's not Central there, but what you see when you look past the grass right there is tall grass, beautiful setting in my mind. That won't be there with two houses or two lots put in that particular place. So it's a natural beauty, it's something that's different, it's kind of you, in essence, and seeing the natural grass out there that is just, it's like a wildlife park from where I am. The homeowners have planted and maintained a flower area at the corner there and other places in Teradyne there to enhance the beauty of the area there. And whoever moves into those two lots there are going to have Teradyne stamped all over them there. There's nothing wrong with that, other than Teradyne is a place and not their house, if you will. There were no plans, to my knowledge, in February 2014 when we moved in and purchased that house to indicate that any changes were planned, so I had no reason to believe there would be a change to the view that I see there. But before I go further, and I have a number of points to make, I'd like to say that I'm impressed with the way Andover's guided, the way the community works, the way the city it works, and I'm not familiar with all the politics. And I don't know much about city government, but the streets are clean, the houses are well-maintained in general, the parks are wonderful, the police force in my mind's exceptional for the way they welcome new people. I watched the maintenance department replace some sidewalks recently there, the streets in good repair. I went to the meetings last fall for the taxes, and I was really impressed with what the city council and perhaps some of you have done, when the community said, "We don't really think you need all of that, at least we don't want to pay for all of that," and they cut back what was essential there. I was impressed that they listened to what the audience had to say. So I voted for the increase because I liked what it is, they said they were going to do what they wanted to do, it's different than what they ended up doing, but it's what we need. City did a good job in leadership on that issue, I thought, there. So I think this is an outstanding city for its size, and I'll use the attractiveness of the city and the way it's maintained. Well, in addition to being a citizen of the town and a resident of Teradyne, I'm also a member of the Teradyne Architectural Committee, and it's kind of an interesting assignment for me there, but the goal is to keep a high level of architectural excellence in what we have in the community. So that tunes me to a number of, I don't want to use the word beauty, but excellence areas, if you will, that I wouldn't normally have been tuned to, and this is one of those areas. But I come today as an individual, not as a spokesman for the ACC, I'm just here for myself. So the first point I'd make is I do not endorse requests to build two more homes here because it impedes the beauty that I see. So that's the first comment I would make. Secondly, I do not see how the addition of two homes is advantageous to the Teradyne homeowners or the homeowners association. I don't see any advantage to adding two more homes. The third point I'd make is I don't see the request as consistent with the approved purpose of a golf course. Doesn't seem to fit. The fourth point, I don't know of anything that's changed that requires a change that you do anything. I don't know something that demands that you have to make a change, the city has to make a change. I'm not talking about you individually, but as a group. Everything seems to be like it was last year when we bought the house. The fifth one is I understand the Teradyne homeowners community is limited to 101 homes, which is a current number that's authorized, if you will. I don't wish to see that changed. Came down to City Hall yesterday, and Les and Dana helped me get something called the POD, P-U-D, whatever you call that there. I guess that's the limiting thing that's today says, you can't put any more there. So there is a document that says it's limited, and we don't put any more there. And that document was approved by Ben Lawrence, the current mayor of Andover, so the mayor said, "That's fine with me, let's leave it that way." I'd ask him to stand up to that same agreement. I know he's not here. So if you have a request in front of you, you have two things you have to do, in my mind. You have to change whatever that document says, or make another document, and you have a plat that you have to approve also, so, and maybe there's more, I don't know, I'm not familiar with the planning things, but you've got at least two things you have to change and agree before that seems to work out there. The sixth point I would make is that this request for rezoning means making a change for what two people want, not the community, not the homeowners, what two people want. There are going to be two lots there, not what the community necessarily wants there. And that means giving special attention or special benefit to two people. I don't understand a city government deciding it wants to give special dispensation to two people when there's no driver. It just seems strange for a city to want to do that. And it also seems opposite, if you will, to the absence of a compelling driver. I don't see any driver that forces that. One of the things, as a part of the Teradyne ACC, I'm attuned again to a number of ugliness and beauty issues, and we look at roofs, and that isn't something most people look at as ugly or beautiful, but we look at that. So I get tuned to looking at questions I wouldn't normally look at there, but I have some questions I'd like to ask either this committee or the gentleman who is up here, and I don't know the people who are involved with the golf course or want these changed, I don't know them at all there. But what I do know is the current owner of the golf course has not taken care of the fences on the south side of the golf course. They're rotten, they're falling apart, literally. It's been that way for years. And I'm going to show you some photos in a minute to what I'm talking about there, it's not an isolated thing, and it's not just a simple rust, but it does show a current serious disregard for maintaining property. And why would I want somebody moving in, building something else that's not taking care of the property? The evidence is already there. I walk 10,000 steps every day, or try to, so I walk past the sidewalks there. Now you may not be able to see too well here, but the brown you see are holes in the metal there. This all along Central Street, nothing magic, but you can see the rust there, you can see it falling apart there, and while it doesn't show up here without the light, those are holes you see in there, not just rust spots. There's holes next to the vertical solid posts there. This is kind of endemic there, what you see throughout there. And you don't see that from the street, and I would ask each one of you, before you make a decision, walk down that street to see what you see. The grass on the other side is beautiful, but the thing that says Teradyne along there, which is the fence along there, that's what you see. And if I were a visitor walking by there, I'd say, "This Teradyne place, they've got some problems. They don't take care of their facilities here very well." Why would I want somebody else moving in there in that same situation? Well, it goes on. I didn't take all the pictures out there, but it goes on and on and on. My point is, it isn't an isolated case, it's almost every single section along there is falling apart. Grass is going through some of the iron there, that's what you see. It isn't all at the bottom, some of it's at the top right there. And before I go further, I'd like to ask some questions there, and I'll ask you gentlemen, and you can ask whoever you need to there, but on the drawings, I'll go to this one, down at the bottom you see complete access control. I have no idea what that means. Could you tell me what that means?
Yeah, that means that they aren't going to allow openings, driveways onto Central from that location, so across that whole section, there'll be no driveways on Central. Those driveways entering the property of Lots 1 and 2 would then enter off of Glen Devon.
So I believe there's the complete access control line also on Glen Devon Road, a portion of that also, is that not right?
Small portion of that, yeah.
Small portion of that, thank you.
When it gets close to Central, there's a restriction.
Okay. Second point, does the proposal here, I can't tell from the drawing, the plating here, or anything associated with it, does that include that Lot Owner 1, Lot 1 Owner owns the fence there too, since it borders Lot 1?
I think that would be covered in the covenants, likely. It's uncertain at this point how that is handled. Maybe the applicant could shed some light on that here in a moment after you finish your presentation.
Because I don't see how, without knowing that, you would say yea or nay, because the fence are part of the problems we've got here right now. Now, I'm from Kansas City, I spent most of my life in Kansas City, if you will, and I know there, if you have sidewalks bordering your land there, you get an assessment for sidewalks. Is the same true here in Andover?
That is not true.
It's not true?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now, as I also look up here, it says Reserve A and Reserve B up there on Glen Devon Road there. It indicates, I don't know what it indicates, but I'm guessing, and you can tell me, that the lot owner's responsible for those areas, is that correct?
That's what I read in the document, yes.
Okay, so we know that the lot owner owns that, is responsible for that area, but we don't know about along Central Avenue? Or do we know along Central Avenue?
I defer to the applicant for that.
Okay. And it makes a difference, and I'll make a comment, you'll understand in a minute why I asked that there. And actually, the reason is because I get to pay for watering all that grass along Central and along Glen Devon, and I live a quarter mile away, something like that, maybe it's an eighth of a mile, and I get to pay for that. Whoever moves into those two lots there, I'm paying for the watering of the area at the edge of their property. That doesn't seem fair to me, but that's the way it's set up right now, and I would say I don't like it for that reason. I can't speak for the Teradyne homeowners overall there, but I get to pay for that, so that will always be an irritation if they move in there, I'm paying for the watering of the grass outside their limits, or which is theirs, I don't know which it'll be. And if the request to change in front of you is approved, and I hope it's not, those two lot owners should pay for the upkeep of those areas bordering them, in my mind. I don't know how you do that, you may not either, but that's one of my beliefs, anyway. The next point I have is that all the areas around the golf course haven't been treated equally by the owners of the golf course. The Teradyne Homeowners Association was one of the first groups in there, built their houses, not allowed to have water wells. Sometime later, the whole section on the west side of the golf course was allowed to have water wells. I don't know where these two folks will be, they can have water wells or not. I can't, you know, I don't understand why different sections in the same golf course area aren't treated equally. That's past history, I don't have this history on that, I know it's the case, and I'd like to have a water well, and a number of the other people in the homeowners association would also, but there doesn't seem to be any relief to that. But I think if Lot 1 and Lot 2 come into existence there, they need to live with the same requirements the rest of us live. I'm a fan of the golf course, even though I don't play golf, I like the staff I see there, I like the beauty of the clubhouse buildings, the rough, the greens, the water sprinkler spouting in the air, and I know the golf course in the past have had some kind of financial problems, and nationally, golf has a problem today, losing memberships and finances are difficult. But I don't see how selling two lots are going to change that for the golf course, if that's a reason for establishing those two lots. We have a number of houses for sale and have had in the past year in Teradyne, so there's plenty of opportunity to buy a house in Teradyne without having to change what the golf course has on there. 101 of us have bought a house in Teradyne and did not request any change to the golf course, and we did not get any special dispensation. There wasn't any favoritism or anything unique there, where two people got something special. And again, in the absence of any compelling driver, I see no reason to grant the request to change to the golf course area. I conclude with a couple of comments here, that the Planning Commission, you have a lot of issues in front of you all year, every year, and I think you must have done very well by what I see in the city, if you will. And all of us that I know of have a desire to see the golf course do well, but if there's any issue on the health or financial stability of the golf course, that isn't an issue for today, for this request, it's a separate issue, a separate topic, if there is one, and I don't know there is one. In times of war, you, which are a part of the city government, may be required to make changes or do something different. In times of natural disaster, you may have to make some different decisions. In times of a national emergency, you might have to do something different than what's laid out in previous plans. But we don't have any of those, and I don't see any compelling reason to make the request to change. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker?
No.
Nope, I don't have any.
Any questions for the speaker?
I have one. Has the Teradyne Owners Association, homeowners association, have they attempted to buy these lots?
I don't know. I'm not part of the hierarchy, if you will, I'm just on the Architectural Committee, I've not heard of anything, I've not heard that there was even an offer for them to buy that.
Okay.
Not aware.
I do also have a question.
Yes.
You talk about there's certain properties that are being maintained by presumably your homeowners association.
Yes.
Do you do that by an easement, or is there some sort of rights that grant, I mean, this seems to be private property.
I don't have the details. I just know that the association puts $4,000 to $10,000 a year into maintenance of items like that.
So presumably, that same association we paying to maintain the fence that you, no?
I don't know.
I guess that's, those are some fundamental questions, that I don't, I don't know who maintains that fence, I don't know who's on the hook to maintain that. I think those are good points to make, but I, I'm not sure that I quite understand how it relates to these lots. I think that's worthy of bringing, bringing up. You know, and I think in your presentation, you talked about special treatment, I don't see this being treated any more special than any other development in this neighborhood and this community. This is going through the same procedures that we would go through for any parcel of land, that it needs to be developed or does not need to be developed, so I thought that's a little anecdotal, but something that I heard and thought was worth, worthy of mentioning. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I agree.
Excuse me. My name's Linda Wallace, I live at 648 Glen Devon Place. My husband, since Andover had, I mean, since Teradyne had a homeowners association, was president, he died in February, so I can tell you a couple of things, but he would be able to do a lot more. We do not maintain the fence, that is Teradyne's. We have nicely maintained and paid for water for the grass along Central and along Glen Devon Place. We are built by Teradyne and have taken that part on to make sure it looks nice. And about buying lots, there were no lots for sale, that's part of the golf course, they're asking that they become lots. So there was nothing to buy. Anything? Questions that maybe I can answer?
My name is Joanne Barkley, I live at 1117 Teradyne Court. I am here to express my displeasure at making two lots there. We purchased our home and built it 21 and a half years ago, have raised a family there. A big part of the reason that we selected Teradyne for our home was due to the fact that the ambiance of the open spaces, it is a nature area, if you walk that area, which I do almost nightly, there is much wildlife there, it contributes to our quality of life. This issue also came up approximately 10 years ago, and was put to a vote of the Teradyne homeowners, and was overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, people did not want this to move forward. So this is not the first time that there's been talk of a possible development of these lots, and it's been turned down dramatically, and most people have the same concern that it is, it certainly changes the ambiance to have on the corner, a very, the most prominent corner, the corner of Central, that we would put houses there instead of open space. Thank you.
Questions for the speaker?
Yeah, I'd like to, can you expand on how that was done 10 years ago, the vote about homeowners?
Please, please come up to the mic, thank you.
We had ballots that we returned, I believe that's how it was done, and it was overwhelmingly the homeowners did not want it. That was another time, the first time that this had been brought up about the development of those lots there.
And that was from the golf course proposing to the homeowners?
Yes, it was from, not the present majority owner, but when he was a minority owner, there was a group that was contemplating some more development of land. And that's the first time that the homeowners had ever heard that that could potentially even be land. I mean, when we bought the lot to build our home on, it was certainly presented to us as this is part of the golf course, never anything about a potential development, so.
Good memory for 10 years. Thank you.
This was an issue. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry about earlier, about just interrupting. It is my first rodeo, so I'm not, I don't know exactly how this all works out, but.
You're naming.
Yes. My name is Kyle Hartman, and I just moved in in June to 510 North Parallel. And it's kind of hard to, well, not really hard to see at all, but right when you come into Glen Devon, that house right on the corner with the fence that just got put in? Well, that would be me. And so that was in, that was in June, and two weeks later, we get a thing in the mail that says two residential lots up for debate. And personally, I'm a golf fan. I played at Fringe University, huge golf fan. And I bought the house and it had that, these lots. And I'm like, you know what? I'm not part of Teradyne. But I feel like I can contribute as a, as a homeowner to make it nice, you know, as far as my property. And I value that space. And I just put in a fence, like, you know, today. And a month of being there, I have noticed, not talking just Teradyne, the whole city walks right down Central. I'm talking hundreds of people, and it's, it's pretty fascinating. So I know that that, that, those lots, you know, that land is nice for everybody to look at. For me, I definitely would like to not see anybody build there. And one of the questions I have is why now? Why, you know, I feel like that neighborhood was put in, golf course, however many years ago, I don't know. But they didn't specifically put houses on those lots for a reason. And I think there, there is a reason, and now it's up for debate. And I think, like, you shared light on a lot of things, and I appreciate everything that you have mentioned, because there's a lot of stuff that, you know, nobody sees that fence besides the walkers, people driving down it, you know? I didn't even know when I lived right there, but anyways, not to get off track, but I would like to not see any houses put in there. And a question that I have as a homeowner on that corner would be the utilities and stuff, and I brought that up earlier, but, you know, it's not anything that I can do about it. They could easily, you know, go in there, have the easement, have the right of way, and I have no say, and that is what it is. And that's one thing the gas company just made me sign two days ago, was if your fence gets knocked down by us, you have to pay for it. And I'm like, oh, that stinks. So with this coming into play, if the utilities are in my backyard and they have to take down my fence, well, I have to put it back up, and that's money I have to spend, and I'm not very happy with that. And on top of that, the, another big reason, like I said before, is the view, and anybody driving down parallel, going to work, sees this beautiful view. Now, I don't know exactly how big these houses are going to be. 2,000 square foot houses, 5,000 square foot houses. Either way, it's going to be an eyesore to me. And hopefully other people, if they see it my way. There's probably more that I have, but I don't know. Anyways, if I have anything else, I'll come back up. So thank you guys for listening to me.
Welcome to Andover.
Any, any questions of the speaker?
Would the agent care to respond to any of the questions that have come up?
I can talk about the utilities. There is a, an existing water line in Glen Devon Road, kind of in the westerly part of the Glen Devon Road right of way. It's on the drawing. It's a little hard to see, but that would be their access to the water system. There is a sanitary sewer near the houses that you see to the, to the north end on the west side of Glen Devon. And that would be our access point to the sanitary sewer system. And that sewer would then be brought south through the golf course area to the west of Glen Devon.
Those two lots. What about lawn care for in front of the fence along Central?
Right now, it's my understanding that the homeowners association maintains that area. And at, at this point, we could do do that maintenance however, however anybody wants to. If they want to, if they want these two new lots to be part of the homeowners association, we'd be okay with that. If they don't want them to be part of the association and have the, have the two homeowners maintain that, we'd be okay with that, park there in front along Glen Devon.
I don't remember that being brought up last week. Was that discussed?
No, I don't think we talked about that at subdivision committee. I can tell you that by the city code, the maintenance of the street right of way, the grass in the street right of way, the trees in the street right of way are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner.
We, we did discuss that.
There must be some relationship there between the golf course and the homeowners association that establishes that the HOA is taking care of that area today.
Does it know, I gather why does it fall on the golf course?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Got somebody else coming up?
Okay, short and sweet. One question I had. Are, are we even aware, like, is somebody already interested in buying these lots, or is this Teradyne Golf Course going, you know, hey, we would like to sell this, this land to make a little money? I mean, is there interest parties to buying these lots? Okay, so there is. So, okay. Thank you.
We don't know, and we don't care.
Not our concern, yeah.
I'm Nick Ride. I'm, I live in 530 Glen Devon. And I'm the first, first house in Teradyne when you drive in. My house is not going to be exactly, it's got a great view right now from the porch. I sit higher than most lots around, and I look over into the, the golf course. Amazing view, and it's one of the few things that we're happy with, with the house, other than the horrible builder that built it. But the two lots that they're putting in, I don't see, I, like Kyle said, I don't see why now what's the benefit? Like, why all of a sudden, Brian stated, no special circumstances or anything like that. But it, it seems like that to us, because it's going to be, they're going to keep the wall there. They have a gated driveway that goes into their individual lot. And I don't, I don't see, it, it just seems very, like, if, if it's going to be just another lot, that's going to be just like all of Teradyne, take down the wall and put the lots in. I don't see why it has to be so, these are the, this is the two lots. Well, like, why here? Like, honestly, it makes no sense whatsoever. I live across the street. I pass there every day. At least twice a day, I'm driving by there. I just don't see a point of just cramming two lots into this area. It, it makes no sense. I've walked the golf course. I've walked the path. This, how it's darker and it makes it more defined as far as these are where the two lots are, realistically, if you walk it, it's, it's not as defined. It's, it's a beautiful prairie. It's got rolling, little rolling hills to it, and that overlooks, it makes, you know, the whole thing about Teradyne Golf Course, you know, the Scottish links. Why, why would you stick to, it's, it's, why not go down the street and buy a new lot somewhere else? Like, it makes no sense. Like, why? That's why I think he was making the point of special circumstances with this area, because this has come to you guys before and has been denied. And so it just makes no sense, like, why now? My problem with it is, no, it won't be right in front of my house, won't be across from my house. But who's saying, two, three years from down the road, they're going to say, you know what? We're going to take that T-box out of there. We're going to put another two lots across the street. It, it's, 101 was the number. That's what they've decided on. That was voted on, and that's what it's been for the last, you know, 25 years. Why, I, maybe you know more than, than we know, but why these lots right now? This is my question. Why specifically this area? Why this area, all of Andover? Why are they picking these two lots? Probably, obviously, it's, it's not to make money from the, from the country club. The, the owner of the country club's not going to make money, because he's supposedly giving one to, to his son. So he's not doing it to make money. He just likes these lots. It looks pretty. Let's put a couple of houses there. So, you know, let's be realistic and see. This guy owns, owns the country club. He wants to stick two lots here. He wants to give one to his son, one to somebody else. And because it's a, it's a beautiful lot. Yeah, it's beautiful. That's why it's, there's nothing built on it, and that's why everybody that lives around it has an issue with it. And so that's, that's the issue. It, it's, it's the golf course. They decided that 25 years ago. It's the golf course. Leave it the golf course. If you want to build somewhere else, go down the street, go build down the street. I just don't see a point of picking this area.
Questions for applicant?
Nope.
Does the agent have any response to any of those questions of?
Nope.
Okay. At this time, I think, I think we're ready to close the.
I was just going to ask a question. What's the next step? What do we get involved with, what happens, you guys?
Yeah, that's where we're going.
That's where we're headed.
So we'll close the public hearing at this point in time. And.
Does Les have any comments?
Sure. Yes. This this case, this case was notified on, in the Butler County Times Gazette on June 27th, 2015. And notices were mailed to 26 real properties in the area. And so that unless any evidence is contrary from present, all the, all the proper notification has been given.
We got to ask about, does anyone on the board need to disqualify themselves with having anything involved in this? Okay.
I do not. And has anybody on the board had any ex parte communication?
Nope.
Now it's Les' turn.
Les?
In your packet, there was some correspondence that we received here at the office, and then some additional correspondence was received today from property owners in Teradyne. 653 Glen Devon was in your packet. And and the other that we received was put on the bench today.
I don't see anybody for it.
I think right there now, right zoning administrator. Anything else? Anything else?
No, I think as long as you revealed that, you can go on to your consideration of your zoning checklist.
We got to do the staff questions, though.
Again?
Staff questions. Factors and findings.
Does anybody have any questions of staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
We did, that's what he was just talking.
Oh, okay. I've got a few, so if you're, so the golf course, which is this, this LLC, they own the acreage there, correct? Okay. And that is zoned, what, today? The area in question?
R2.
Zoned R2 single family. The entire golf course and the parcel one, the, the first residence is built. We're all in, in the same parcel, and they're all zoned R2.
R2, okay. And what's been Andover's history of amending PUDs over the last, say, 10 years? PUDs?
Normally, there are about as many amendments to PUDs as there are years. The Green Valley PUD was first filed in 1980, and I think we have 30 amendments to it. Cornerstone PUD was a 2000 PUD, and I think we're on amendment number six.
Okay. How many's been done to Teradyne? I mean, I know that's hard to, just a rough number.
I believe there are two previous amendments.
And is those, those PUD amendments, have they been to add additional lots? For example, we're going from 101 to 103 in this. Have those been to add additional lots, or has it been other changes?
There is a host of amendments.
I'm trying to understand Andover's kind of historical, how we've ruled in the past. Is it, you know, because it's one thing to make a change or architectural, whatever, but we're adding additional lots, and I want to see what our history has been. And that may be hard to.
The Green Valley PUD has been all over the board. Some changes to and from multifamily, some changes to and from commercial residential.
Right.
Cornerstone, there have been amendments that, that, for instance, added a school parcel, 105 acres that was originally for single-family residence.
There was.
There was an amendment that, that added multifamily dwelling units to the plan.
There was one of them. I don't know which one it was, but they had requested larger lots, and when, as the time's going on, excuse me, they request, they changed this area to, to make it smaller lots, because that was what was selling it. Not the larger lots. I'm having set through these for the last 18 years. I've seen a lot of them.
And I know it may be 159th. I may be off on the street, but there was that, those townhomes that were put in in Teradyne. Pardon? Right, but where that's going in, that was in a PUD, correct, or did they take that out of the?
Same planned unit development.
As this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was the subject of a couple of the changes in the PUD.
Yeah.
The number of dwelling units went up and down, and it's finally settled, and utilities are in place, and they intend to start construction.
And that was, had, that had the residential zoning, and then even though it was the golf course, they pulled that out and made houses in there, basically.
There were some changes in that area. Where the townhouses are being built now was originally planned and zoned for multifamily.
I see.
There were some changes just to the north of that parcel, between the clubhouse and the maintenance building, that were part of the golf course that allowed some additional dwelling units.
Okay, so they changed the PUD to allow that?
Right.
That was really the golf course, okay.
Right.
I got you. Last question. Let's say we vote against this. In theory, what could be other uses of this land? In other words, this commission changes down the road, people's attitudes, beliefs, or whatever change. Could this, how easy could this get rezoned into retail or something else down the road? And then you, you, you open up a whole bigger can of worms, because this is really about, you know, the commercial, the guy that owns this is, what does he want to do with his property, right? And so if, if this doesn't pass, you know, we're going to be coming back to this again and again, and you may have different voting in the future. So my question is, is it better to have houses here, or you may get something different down the road?
This is a fairly unusual PUD in that it has This is a fairly unusual PUD in that it has that maximum number of dwelling units. Most of the PUDs have a range.
Oh.
Or a density. So many units per acre.
Okay. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you. Thanks, Les.
Good questions. Okay. We got the public comment, written communications we went over. Applicant's final comments, we went, we closed the public hearing. Well, we just move right along here. Case liberation, okay? So we could go through our 17 factors. And, they're right here. The formal, the formal request for this is a proposed amendment to the Terradyne general planning unit development. So it's amendment to that development. It's not a zoning change, if I'm getting that.
Right.
Okay. Okay. This is, this was what the... You got, you showed that one there.
I have, uh...
You want this one, Brian? Right there.
I hope you have the other show.
So...
Oh, here it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll go on to our next step, which is the, uh, our findings and factors.
Okay, the, um, one of our first things to bring up on here is what the zoning is around this area.
Yes.
And, and most of it, as it said on the first page, at the bottom there, are two and R1 single-family homes in that area along with the, uh, the golf course.
That's correct. All, all adjacent land uses are residential, uh...
Yep. And that's what number one is, that's the number one question is.
So, what, uh, what are the existing uses and their character and conditions on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? I think, I think that pretty much just answers it, that it's all residential. So, next question. What is, uh, the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to that requested change? And I think that answers that.
The only thing that is, uh, there is part of it is the golf course. And that's, even though it's R2, like Les was saying, it is an open area.
So it's... And, uh, what is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant or, uh, has zoned in the factor of the, in this consideration?
No.
Oh.
And, uh, would this request correct in error in the application, or are these regulations?
Nope.
That is a no? In the, in the, is this a request a cause for changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature or significance of such changed or changing conditions?
No changing conditions.
Maybe, uh, demand would be the only change, potentially?
I think, yeah, that'd be a press, I mean, that'd be a stretch.
Yeah, demand by who?
Uh, is there adequate sewage disposal and water facilities, uh, necessary for, uh, public facilities, including streets and access? And do they provide and serve the uses permitted on the subject property?
Yes.
Yes, it looks like, uh, they would extend a bit of sanitary sewer to the site. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedication or made for right-of-way easements or access controls? And I believe, uh, staff has indicated that there will be a plat accompanying this in the future.
Yes.
Would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property?
No.
Are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requir, is, is requested? And, uh... Say no.
Yeah.
Are there other available sites on the golf course to build?
Well, it's not just restricted to the golf course. It's, it's a citywide type thing, so... And, uh, staff answered, "Not applicable," and it's hard to argue with that. It's, uh, it's, uh, what the owners requesting to do with their property.
Mm-hmm.
If the request is for business or institutional purposes, are these, uh, such uses needed or provided for more services or employment opportunities? And I think that is a not applicable.
Yeah. It's either no or not applicable.
Correct. Is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
The zone is not really changing.
Yes. To what extent would removal of restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood?
Well, we heard that. Probably not money-wise, but as, uh, what they would like to see is all... Any other comments?
Uh, would the request be consistent with the proposed purpose of zoning, uh, district classification, and the intent and purpose of these regulations? I'd say yes.
Yep.
Is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan? And does it further enhance the implement, implementation of the plan? I would say yes. Adds, adds more variety and potential for developed land. And what is the nature of the support or opposition of this request?
The biggest one is restrictive view and, uh, what do you call it? Environment or a locale or... I don't know what you call that, but, uh, that's the biggest, uh, biggest thing. Most of them are complaining about it, is the view that it breaks up the, the, um, aesthetics. That's a good, that's a good one, yes. Takes away the open area.
Aesthetics, yep.
Yeah. Are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in this evaluation? I think we've...
Not really.
No.
We've heard from everybody and...
Yep.
And, uh, lastly, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed by the applicant by not approving the request?
That is, that is a tough one to always answer. Pine is crying. Yeah. I'm not even sure it's answer, it's answer, answerable. All right. Do some research now, huh?
Yes. So we're, fundamentally, we are reconfiguring a parcel. And, and then we're creating two additional dwelling units. And that's, that's about it here.
Mm-hmm.
And...
I'm trying to find answers that support.
Yeah.
So, just keep talking.
Yeah. I, um... I have, uh, I look at a piece of ground like this personally, and I see dollar signs. I see the potential for development. Uh, who wouldn't want to live on a golf course? What, and I know that's been vacant for years, but, uh...
Well, it sounds like they're not selling it. It sounds like they might be building for family.
Well, regardless, eventually, it's gonna be for sale for someone. But I, I didn't hear anybody, I didn't hear the applicant tell me that. That's hearsay, so...
Yeah, that's immaterial.
Yeah, it is.
It's a commercial deal, however they want to do it. They own the land. However, are we opening comments before motion?
Absolutely.
Oh, sure.
I mean, my struggle is, you know, I'm always wanting to be pro-business, obviously, but, um, when they bought the place, the deal was 101 houses. And we're changing the deal. And if I was in their shoes, I'd have heartburn with that. You know, um, you know, as the staff has said, the range and density is normally what a PUD is defined. This one was a hard number. And to me, that's a deal. If we change it. Uh, now, on the flip side, for the owners, so my vote's gonna be no against it. Uh, the flip side for the owners is, if this doesn't go through, and that's the point I was making, you can get a different planning commission. This may vote different two years, three years, five years down the road. And they may approve it. So it'd behoove them to buy this and keep it the way they want it as a homeowners, because this is gonna continue to come up, in my opinion. So, that's my thoughts on it.
For the city, too, that's kind of the gateway into Andover, coming from the west.
Enjoy looking at it when I can.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, because the Andover sign sits right there, too, doesn't it? Welcome.
On the south side of the road.
They're close.
Yeah.
I think these are, uh, I think these are large lots. I presume they would command a large house. It's a presumption of mine. I think, uh, it's not as though we're adding lots of density here.
Yeah, where does it stop, though? Do we develop the corner at 159th next?
I think that's owned by somebody else. Isn't that, uh, office building, that's owned by someone else?
Yeah. Yeah.
But you got a point. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, make a motion.
Make a motion.
All right. Having considered evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the zoning application, I, Lynn Heath, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z 2015-02 be approved for the proposed amendment to the amended Terradyne Plenary General PUD plan. PUD, okay. Existing parcel one, we configure the boundaries of parcel one to create a new parcel one B, increase the maximum number of single-family detached dwelling units to reflect an increase from 101 to 103, as we've discussed. And parcel one B to allow not more than two single-family dwelling units in the R2 single-family residential district, based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing. The supporting, uh, is 11 and 14. Ready for a second? Let's do this one.
All second the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a motion at second. All in favor with the motion, say, say aye.
Say aye, okay, whatever.
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the motion passes three to two. All right, thank you.
Can we get a five-minute recess?
Yeah. Take a five-minute recess.
Okay. I can stand up for a drink.
This matter would be heard by the city council at their August 11th meeting.
This is more of a tougher decision than you had. You're normally there pretty easy, cut and dry. She's, she's, she's a non, she's a non-resident.
This is exactly why I'm in the country.
I know.
This is exactly why we're out there.
Yeah.